Now is the time for citizen comments. This is the time for anyone who'd like to speak to us tonight to step forward about an item that's not already on the agenda. Anybody like to speak to us tonight? Seeing none, I'll move on to a very important item on this agenda. Anybody that's been around Correville for any length of time recognizes the name Dvorsky for many reasons, including Sue. But tonight, we are here to recognize Sue's husband, Bob, or Robert, who started out at this, his political career at this table here, actually it was in the other end of the building, I believe, probably when Bob was here. But he got his start on the city council and moved on to the Iowa House of Representatives and now for twenty-some years has been a state senator that has served us and the entire state incredibly well. But he has announced that he was not going to run for reelection this fall, so this will probably be the first of many recognition for him. I'd like to read a proclamation, please. Proclamation, City of Correville. Whereas Senator Robert Dvorsky, at the young age of thirty-one, was elected to begin his first term on the Correville City Council in January nineteen eighty, dutifully serving for seven years. And whereas Senator Dvorsky joined the Iowa House of Representatives in January nineteen eighty-seven, where he represented the city of Correville and surrounding areas until January nineteen ninety-five. And whereas Senator Dvorsky joined colleagues in the Iowa Senate in January nineteen ninety-five, where for nearly twenty-four years, he has held numerous prestigious leadership roles. And whereas Senator Dvorsky has been a voice for Correville and Iowa Legislature, especially in post-flood redevelopment efforts. And whereas Senator Dvorsky is a longtime Correville resident, and he and his wife Sue were the first residents of Old Town and Correville upon its post-flood redevelopment. And whereas Senator Dvorsky is an original member of the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County Board of Directors and has served as its president since two thousand eight. And whereas Senator Dvorsky recently announced that he will not seek reelection to the Iowa Senate in two thousand eighteen. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, John A. Lundell, Mayor of Correville, do hereby proclaim Friday, April sixth, two thousand eighteen, as a day of recognition, appreciation, and respect for Senator Robert Dvorsky. In honor of Senator Dvorsky's dedication and commitment to public service, Correville and Iowa, dated this twenty-seventh day of March two thousand eighteen, John A. Lundell. So congratulations to Bob. There are several family members, his wife and aunt, is in the audience, and what are you, Trace? Okay, yeah, so, and so this Bob will, of course, he's working tonight. He hasn't retired yet, so he is working hard in the senate today and this week in Des Moines, so that's why he's not with us tonight. But there is an event planned coming up in a week or so, and I'll have the privilege of reading this again and presenting it to him then in a nice frame suitable for hanging. Please say a few words, Sue.
Because he's not here tonight, I'm the aforementioned Sue Dvorsky, I just wanted to say, from our whole family, from Trace and Aunt Norma, for Naomi and Ernie Dvorsky, for Ann and Caroline Dvorsky, who were members, who were raised by this village, this was their village that raised them, you raised Bob in that village, Naomi and Ernie were integral parts of the early, the early days in this community that really identified Correville pride, and understood what that meant, and saved the school, and moved the library, and did the kinds of things that Tom and his parents remember. And so, from Naomi and Ernie, and Annie and Caroline, and Bob and I, and all of our extended family, we thank you, we love this community, as if it were in fact another member of our family. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else like to speak?
Well, I've, being the younger, well, not younger than Bob, Bob is a year younger than me. I replaced Bob in January of eighty-seven.
Wow.
And he's been my senator as long as I've been, as long as I've been on this council, and he's brought a lot of good things to Correville, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, well, Sue, with your permission, I'll just save this and bring it on browdear. Okay. Moving on, much, much less Monday. Item six is the Iowa River Landing Retail Lease Public Hearing. This is a public hearing on alternative proposals and intent to dispose of interest in real property for leasing an approximate one thousand four hundred and sixty square foot portion of the Iowa River Landing Part II condominiums to High Ground Cafe LLC. This is simply to switch the High Ground Cafe's license agreement to a five-year lease. It's an extension of their lease to five years. So I'll open the public hearing. Are there any comments? Any written?
No written.
Okay, seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the disposition of property and approving a lease agreement with High Ground Cafe LLC is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any comments? Rokel.
Gross.
Gil.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
The resolution is approved, all ayes. Item seven is the Iowa Arena and Performance Center Public Hearing. Item A is a public hearing on not to exceed fifty million dollars in general obligation urban renewal loan agreements. The city is a guarantor of these loans to be entered into by ArenaCo to finance the arena project. Is there anything that wants to be said before I open the public hearing, or shall I? Go ahead, I'll open the public hearing first. So, I'll open the public hearing and entertain any comments from either the staff or the audience. Any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution determining to proceed with the entering into a loan agreement and/or guarantee agreement and taking additional action thereon is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Dodd's. Discussion.
Yeah, this will be just the first of many actions that will need to be taken. There will be development agreements between the city and ArenaCo, and other agreements as well, that all will become before this board, our council, before any actual loans will be issued. So, there will be many more steps in the process, and encourage people to continue to follow those particular developments, and we'll be providing as much information as anyone would like about those agreements.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions for Kelly or anyone else?
I'd just like to take this time to thank Kelly and the many people that have worked hard on this project. You know, it's going to go through fairly rapidly here, but we've been working on this for how many years?
Actually, I think the first part was in nineteen nineties.
Nineteen ninety, and it's, we're on our way, Kelly. Steel's going to go up, isn't it? Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Rokel. Gil.
Hi.
Dodd's.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item C is also related to the same project, a consideration of resolution approving an engineering services agreement with TerraCon Consultants to provide material testing services for the Iowa Arena Project.
Resolution approving an engineering services agreement with TerraCon Consultants to provide material testing services for the Iowa Arena Project, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gil, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Rokel. Dodd's.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Gil.
Hi.
Resolutions approved, all ayes. Item eight is Lot Three, Gayton's Second Edition Public Hearing, and a few other things. So, item A and B is a Building Department Report and Planning and Zoning Commission Report, and Building Official Jim Kessler is going to lead that off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What you're looking at on the screen tonight is the aforementioned project. This is at five seventy-first Avenue, or right now is the home of the car wash on First Avenue that's located between the Deli Mart and Burger King. So this is a request by Carefree Limited to approve an amendment to the PUDB site plan that's already on there that houses for the car wash. So we're going to amend the PUD plan to replace the car wash with this building. It's a four-story building with underground parking. The first floor of the building will be commercial use with professional offices, or it possibly could have some mercantile use as well. The first floor of the bill, as I said, will be the commercial use. The top three floors will be residential use, so there'll be three floors of eleven apartments per floor, so there'll be thirty-three dwelling units there. As I stated, there is underground parking, and as we look at this site plan, this developer has worked really closely with the city and the city staff here and everybody to try to develop this building, much like we're trying to redevelop First Avenue along the River View Plaza area, and that's to get the buildings as close to the street as possible. Our first look at this building had a row of parking, two rows of parking actually, one against the, facing the street, and one facing the building with a drive aisle in between them, and that was the, we weren't happy with that plan at all, because we wanted, like I say, we're trying to match what we've already started on First Avenue. So we've worked very hard with him to get the building moved forward as much as possible and get the parking in the rear. All the storefronts will still face the front, and the way the building looks now, and we'll get a picture of the building here in a minute, the way the building looks now, they'll have entrances from the back as well to some of these, to these stores. But the problem with getting it clear up to the street like we had on the other one, like we have on River View Plaza, is there's quite a bit of elevation change between the north and the south on this lot. So, that made, meant that we were going to have to have some retaining walls in the front. So that made us move it back further, but we still have moved it back and accomplished this without any drive aisles or parking in the front of the store. So this store will have two access points off of First Avenue, and they'll both be full access points. So the top access point will be the shared access with the Deli Mart, so there'll be an in-road right here, and there'll be a left turnout and a right turnout, and that will access the back of the building and all this parking that's in the rear of the building. Then there'll be a southern access to this site as well, that they'll share with Burger King, and that will be this driveway right here, which once again will have one-way in and have a left-out and a right-out onto First Avenue. This will be the entrance to the underground parking. Now because of the elevation change, these two driveways aren't going to be able to join so that we can, so that they can come in on one end and go out on the other end. They come in on the north end, they're going to have to go back out on the north end, and then this will be the only access to the underground parking. So that's kind of the way the site lays out, and I will show you the look of the building here as well. I'll run down through these. So, when we're looking at the building from the First Avenue elevation, this is the First Avenue elevation, and as I said, I was talking about the change of elevation, this is actually coming off of the sidewalk that's on First Avenue. This is a handicap ramp that will go up, there'll be a landing here and meeting a sidewalk that goes in front of these storefronts on the building. And then on this end, there will be a stairway going up as well. There's also a retaining wall here to make up for some of the elevation change we had here. It's not near as high as it was before. We, it was up there about eleven to twelve feet high, and we've got it reduced to where it's lower than that now. But as I said, they do have the handicap access off of First Avenue, then they have a sidewalk that goes behind the building to access the parking for the people to park in the back that want to walk around to the front of the storefronts. So this is the west elevation, and this is the one that will face to the west, the back of it, and as I said, most of these units, it will go through the building and it will have a possibility of access from the rear as well. North elevation of the building is down here, and if you were traveling from north to south, this is what you would see on the north elevation of the building, and then the south elevation are the one that for, faces Burger King. This is the drive-in, this is the overhead door to the underground parking. So this was on the P&amp;Z meeting, at our last meeting, and recommended for approval by the council for the amendment to the PUD, as well as the site plan by a seven-to-zero vote.
Thank you, Jim. Item C is a public hearing, what you just heard, an amendment to the PUDB site plan for this project. I'll open the public hearing. Are there any comments? Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Brian Watts, on behalf of Watts Group. We're representing the client in this project to do the development, construction, and then property management, and just here if you guys have any questions with it. Also wanted to say thank you to the city staff for the amount of work and help. There's a lot of communication going back and forth, and I think we, both sides put a lot of effort into getting as good a product as we could here along First Avenue, so hopefully it looks slightly better than the car wash is there now, so we'll see. But if you guys have any questions, happy to answer them. Thank you.
The dog wash is going away too, then.
Relocated.
Okay. Any questions for Brian, or any other comments? Any written comments?
No written.
Okay, seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the amended PUDB site plan for Lot Three, Gayton's Second Edition, Correville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by?
Second. Seconded by Gil. Discussion? Rokel. Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Gil.
Hi.
Dodd's.
Hi.
Resolution passes, all ayes. Item nine is Ridgeview Parts One through Three, and we'll have the Building Department and Planning and Zoning Report, please.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is a request by Venture One for approval of rezoning from R3 CPUD to CPUD and an R1, I'm sorry, rezoning from R3 and a CPUD to an R1, and approval of a preliminary plat and a PUDA site plan for Parts One, Two, Three. So, let me back up one and show you. This is a rezoning map that we have on the property. This is a hundred and three acres of land that's located in our west land use area. It's bordered on the west by, to put it in a good perspective, the trailer court is on the west, and as you go to the east, it's bordered by the Coral Court and the Coral Crossing subdivision that are being built now. So, most of this land is zoned R3, so we're rezoning that to an RPUD, and there is some commercial land down here to the south that is being rezoned from CPUD back to an R1 PUD, so this whole area will be under an R1 PUD development category. So we're bordered on this area by the trailer court. It's, like I said, it's in the west land use area, there's quite a bit of ground, undeveloped ground north of us yet. This is the extension of the Coral Crossing subdivision and development that's being built out now, and we'll be looking at another addition to that later. And then, as you go to the south, you have the nursing home, Land Park, or, I'm sorry, Windmill Point Nursing Home to the south, and then you have some of the development along Merchant Street to the south as well. So as we, let me get back to a site plan here. This is proposed to be developed in three different phases, and I'll go through what all this development entails first. Like I said, there's a hundred and three acres of land here. It's proposed to be developed. It consists of four twenty-four unit multifamily buildings, so the four twenty-four unit multifamily buildings are here, six thirty-six unit multifamily buildings, and those are located right here, that's six thirty-six units, and four eighteen units multifamily buildings, which are located right here at this point. There's three proposed now, eighty-eight units apartment buildings located on the west border of it. This is an extension of Lucas Drive coming up from Merchant Street, traveling along the west of this, and then going all the way to the north edge of this development, and will be extended at a future date with future development. There's fifty-three fourplex two-story townhomes, ten two-story duplexes, one threeplex, and in this point, there's sixty single-family dwelling units for single-family dwelling. So you have multifamily development in this area here and along the border, and the rest of this is a combination of fourplexes, one threeplex, and the combination of two, one and two-story townhomes, and then some two-story duplexes. So it will be developed in phases, and Part One will be lots two through twelve and two outlets. So basically, in that area, we are talking about these, this development right here in this area. And then Phase Three, and it is designated on here, but it's very hard for me to see, and I know it's going to be even more difficult for you to see on the screen, but Phase Three will basically bring in the three eighty-eight units, and will bring in these townhomes along in here. And then the last part that will be developed is the sixty single-family dwellings in this area right in here. The nice part about this development is, and it will have to happen before we get too many more units out in this area, Oak, or, I'm sorry, Jones Boulevard is developed with Coral Crossings to about a point right here. This development will extend Jones Boulevard, bring it into a cul-de-sac that will join onto Spring Rolls Drive coming out of Coral Crossings, and we'll, we can see that on the next subdivision we're going to review, into this roundabout, and Spring Rolls Court will go all the way over here, east to west, and tie into Lucas Boulevard. Jones Boulevard will continue on south and tie into Jones Boulevard that's stubbed up by the nursing home. So with this development and with the early phases of this development, we will get the extension of Jones Boulevard connected, which will be really nice to have it connected, would be nice to have it connected right now with Coral Ridge Avenue the way it is, but hopefully it'll be connected for too much longer. So we'll have this as a main arterial or main traffic carrier through here. We will have Spring Rolls Court that goes east to west, and we'll have Lucas that also goes north to south in this development. So there are a total of about nine hundred and forty-three dwelling units on this, and feel free to check my math, because I did this kind of quickly before the meeting, counting them, and in addition, there are two thousand and ninety-two parking spaces on here. All of the multifamily that you see on here, all the multifamily units have underground parking as a part of them, much like most of the buildings we're getting now, which is a big help, and helps reduce our surface parking quite a little bit. So anyhow, this was also on P&amp;Z at our last meeting, and was recommended both parts, the rezoning and the site plan issues by a seven-to-zero vote.
Okay, thank you, Jim. With that, I'll open the public hearing on this proposed rezoning. Are there any comments in the audience? Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Jake Evans, I'm with Venture One LLC. We're the ones bringing this project in front of you guys for approval, hopefully. Happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Great. Thanks, Jake. Did Jim describe it accurately?
Yes, he did.
Okay. Any other comments during the public hearing portion? Any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and consider the resolution. Ordinance, I'm sorry, this is an ordinance, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash one thousand three, an ordinance amending the Correville zoning ordinance, that same being ordinance number six-six-four, is previously amended rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Correville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Ridgeview Parts I-Three from R3 General Residential District to RPUD-One Residential Plan Unit Development. One district is introduced for first consideration by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Any discussion?
Just, one of the things I'd just like to point out from staff viewpoint is that, as the council knows, we spent a lot of time working on the west land use plan for this whole area, and that was something that we spent over a year's time putting together was the west land use plan. And one of the things, I just want to commend the developer, developers for working with the staff on meeting all the different requirements of the west land use plan. It's, you know, there's a lot of things involved there that wasn't necessarily part of other parts of the community, but I think they have done an excellent job of bringing in all of the different components of the west land use plan, and providing a wide mix of housing, which is what our west land use plan called for, and it's, it was just exciting. I do, you know, the developers had to have patience, because we were learning as staff as we went through the west land use plan and tried to apply it to a development like this, especially this large, but I think by and large that the patience that the developer had will pay off, and that it's going to be a great development for Correville and those people in that neighborhood.
And to follow up on that, I'd like to recognize a few people, because this west land use plan was, was a year in working, and Jill, Jill and I were on that committee, and the staff, Ellen and Jim, Ellen Hubble and Jim Kessler headed up the staff on this, and it, you know, there's a lot of pressure for development, and Correville has always prided itself in developing, developing quality, quality homes and quality housing. And it took us a while, and we have an excellent, excellent developer, and this is going to be a very nice area. And that's because you hold out and you make sure that all the planning is right before anything is built. And again, I'd like to thank the people, the property owners and the developers for working with us and ending up with a good product. Thank you.
I just wanted to add, Jim, maybe for the people at home watching, in the center of the multi-housing on the left, probably green space there with trails and things, right?
Yes, that's true, and I failed to mention that, but we had, we had several areas in here, and they really don't show up here very well, because it's a pretty crowded development anyhow. But this is another large open space lot, and this is a pretty good-sized open space lot. And then, coming out of the Coral Crossings development, where we've got some amenities planned for the people, they're carrying those through to this, and the developer has assured us that the amenities that we have talked about and discussed with him will be part of his development. And these are kind of just examples of some of the, if I can get them back up here, I was trying to enlarge them so we could see them, of the things we will see in that. We, in the, larger spaces, you know, where the big two open lots are, they're planning to have some landscaping, maybe a pagoda, some picnic areas and what have you like that. In other areas, this is actually a trash dumpster screening, so we won't look at that, but in other areas, they will have smaller, smaller areas of recreation, you know, maybe for the children and stuff like that, that will be scattered through the whole development. So people will have access to it and will have ways to get to it, and then they will have someplace to send their kids out to play or to go have a picnic or whatever they want to do. But there will be amenities along with this subdivision.
Yeah, and Jim, point out also, I mean, there's a huge, major stormwater plan as part of this that developers worked with us, that is one of the three major areas in the west area in regards to stormwater, and it'll also be an amenity for the subdivision.
Yeah, the biggest share of this development actually flows from east to west, so these, these ponds that you're looking around here are actually, are actually part of the stormwater quality system and retention system that we need. We've worked really hard on, hard on this with them, and they've worked much harder than we have on it to get what we want, and we've actually had two consultants working together to get what we want in these, because we want these to kind of be not only aesthetically attractive, but we also want them to do the job and be an amenity to the, to the development as well. So, we don't, we don't really see it here, and I may have that on here, let me go back a little ways. I also have pictures of the buildings on there, which we can go through if you like. Maybe it isn't part of this one. We had, I thought, but these storm, these basins that we're looking at here, as we're working with them, we're trying to get them, as many as we can, connected with short, you know, waterfalls or stream or, you know, any, any kind of ways that we can get the water to kind of flow from basin to basin. And so there'll be some kind of amenity here, and this is still being worked out, something that will not only look good, but do the job we have to do with it, that will tie these three together, and then- three together and then hopefully do the same thing down here with these two. And this one especially, we're trying to make as a recreational area so that people can fish in it, can, can utilize it and really, really make it part of the community. So all that is still kind of in the development stage with the two consultants we're working with and they're working with, but it will all come together and be quite an amenity to the, to the subdivision. As well as do the water quality that we, that we're required to do. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right, sorry. Just to clarify for the people watching at home, this is in the Clear Creek Amana School District?
It, everything in our West Land Use Area is in Clear Creek Amana School District, yep.
I think this looks fantastic. I really like the fact that there is a large mix of housing types and density in this plan. So I agree with Tom. I think this, this is very exciting and really high-quality development, and great work to everybody who has worked on this.
Anything else? I, I really appreciate the continuity of the road system that this brings with it, too. It fills in some missing gaps in our arterial street network, which are important. Okay. So, roll call.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Gil.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all eyes. Item number 10 is also an ordinance change for two parcels to be added to Coral Crossing Parts Six and Seven. Jim?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, they also have a couple of small places of rezoning on here that they have to rezone. I think we have that exhibit on here. They're very small. This, this little notch here is a rezoning area, and this has to be rezoned from R-III to R-PUD to join it into the Coral Crossings development. And this area here is actually down, is actually industrial right now, so that has to be rezoned from industrial to R-PUD because they've acquired this little piece of land here as part of their development from the former owner. So there's little, two little pieces of rezoning that have to be done with this as well. So this is a development that Jezeska has started quite some time ago, and there's quite a few, we have quite a few townhomes already built in this area. This is actually the extension of Jones Boulevard that's already in, coming from Oakdale Boulevard. This is Spring Rose Circle that I talked about in the last subdivision, that originally when Coral Crossings was developed, before any of this other West Land Use Plan was thought of or was in the development stage or not, Spring Rose Court was going to come off of Jones Boulevard, come back around, I'm sorry, come back around and tie back in and just circle back up into Jones Boulevard at this point. But when we started looking at the Venture One development, or the Ridgeview development, and we started planning out the, the street network, then we decided to take Spring Rose Court all the way through, but it's still, for convenience of these people, there's the leg of Spring Rose that comes up here and still ties into Jones Boulevard. So we still have that continuity that we had for this development here, back to Jones Boulevard, but we also had the extension of Spring Rose Court clear over to the west. So, and that's, that's, we've worked with these developers as well. It's actually the same developer that's working on the Ridgewater, the Ridgeview, I'm sorry. We've done some shifting in the design of the development here so that these two developments, Ridgeview and Coral Crossing, Sixth and Seventh Editions, went together better, fit together better, and they transition into each other very naturally now. Once again, we have amenities scattered through here. This is, this is a retention pond in the middle of it, which is a big amenity to it. There's pagoda up in here, there's other different amenities scattered out, around through here, too. So this is in addition to their PUD plan or that they've already, you know, started with the 36 units coming around the outside and the townhomes and a scattered duplex here and there in the middle of the development. So once again, we worked hard with them and they worked, cooperated very well with us to get this so that the two developments transitioned together very well and actually looked like one large development when it's all done. Once again, this was on P&amp;Z and recommended seven to zero for council approval.
Thank you, Jim. Item C, I'd like to open the public hearing on this rezoning of these two parcels. Are there any comments from the audience? Any written?
No written.
Okay. Close the public hearing and consider the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2018 dash 1004, an ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 664, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as two parcels to be added to Coral Crossing Parts Six and Seven, from R-III General Residential District and I-II Light Industrial District to R-PUD-1 Residential Plan Unit Development. One district is introduced for adoption first consideration by Councilmember Foster, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. It was close. Any discussion?
Roll call.
Gross.
Hi.
Gil.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Foster.
Hi.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all eyes. Item 11 is Iowa River Landing Part Nine. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Iowa River Part Nine is a three-lot subdivision that actually will be necessary to create for the building of the arena. Lot number one will host the arena. Lot number two is the hotel that will be on the north side of the arena. And then lot number three down here is for future development. So to put this in perspective, this is East Knight Street going downward the Marriott Hotel, and all the other development is on the other, on the north part of this. This is Quarry Road at this area. And then this down here is going to be kind of an access road that will access some of the loading area and the mechanical area of the arena. So lot number one hotel, lot number, I'm sorry, lot number one arena, lot number two hotel, and then lot number three will be for future development. And this is the extension of East Second Avenue from where it ends now at Knight Street and all the way that will eventually tie into Sixth, First Avenue, Sixth, Sixth Street. So final plat and preliminary plat, recommended by P&amp;Z, seven to zero for approval.
Thank you, Jim. Item C, I consider the resolution for the preliminary plan.
Resolution approving the preliminary plat for Iowa River Landing Part Nine, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion?
Roll call.
Gil.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Gil.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Gil.
Hi.
Resolution passes all eyes.
Item 12 is the wastewater treatment plant improvements, 2017, and this is a resolution authorizing a construction, a contract for construction and administration by the Venestra and Kim Incorporated.
Resolution authorizing the construction and administration portion of the engineering services agreement with Venestra and Kim Inc. for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project 2017 is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gil. Discussion?
Yeah, this was just, we approved the original agreement two or three years ago with them, and at the time, the council said they would not authorize the construction administration. So this is the second step in that process to authorize the construction administration at the same cost that was in the original contract two or three years ago, so.
Thanks. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Gil.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Resolution is approved, all eyes. Item 13 is parking regulations. This is the, an ordinance regarding setting some four-hour parking limits in certain areas around the city.
Ordinance number 2018 dash 1005, an ordinance amending Chapter 69 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Corleville, 2011, as previously amended regarding parking regulations, is introduced for adoption first consideration by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Seconded by Gross. Discussion?
Yeah, this follows through with our plan that we'd had from the beginning, but we just didn't have the ordinance updated, and this is to regulate those areas. For example, the first floor of the Iowa River Landing ramp, the first floor was designed to service the retail development and was to not be a place where you would park all day long. And we have had some issues recently with people parking there for extended periods of time, and so this will enable that. With all of the developments occurring down there, we have a lot more people trying to park, and so we just want to make sure that we do have the turnover that we need.
Okay. Any other discussion? Is this the first reading of three?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Gil.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Ordinance passes its first reading, all eyes. Item 14 is wireless facilities siding, and this is also first reading of an ordinance. Dodd?
Ordinance number 2018 dash 1006, an ordinance amending Chapter 161 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Corleville, 2011, as previously amended regarding wireless hiding regulations, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by...
Seconded by Gross. Kevin, do you want to...
Yeah. We first passed this ordinance last year in, in response to a federal act that provision was thrown in the Tax Cutting Jobs Act to allow, basically, what's, what's going on now, instead of putting towers up, the companies are putting these mobile stations on utility poles. There are some on Holiday Road right now, if you remember. This is, and then the state, last year, they passed a bill that severely limits the city's ability to regulate these items. So what, what I have done here is added the, tried to, to come up with some regulations that don't, don't conflict with the state's regulations. If you, I don't know, most of you sent an email, we got an email at 10:00 to 5:00 today from somebody from AT&amp;T, who would be one of the, one of the people that would be putting up these wireless sites throughout the city. Basically, the legislature allowed them to go, before we did not allow them to go on our own poles. They, up on Holiday Road, they went on Lynn County's poles, but the state said, no, cities, you have to let them go on your light poles and everything. So they requested, there are two items that they requested be changed. One of them is relocation. As you remember, we just replaced the lights on Highway Six, and those were the type of facilities that they would normally put these facilities on. If we had to wait, I had required 30-day notice. They, they're requesting 90. I'll talk to Dan and Scott and see what, although, as you know, we have major problems with utility companies actually following through on moving their items even though they're required to. The second item was the bill, if you can imagine, actually restricts what the city can even charge these people to, to put these on our, on our poles and everything. So one of the things that we might have to look at is have an outside consultant look at their application because they could actually put them on our traffic light poles and screw up some of the, you know, could, could conflict with some of the function of the poles. So she had requested that, in the statute, it actually says you can't charge more than $500 or up to $3,000 for an outside entity. We are going to follow that, but she requested that be in there. I'm going to just look back at the statute and, but for now, I'd recommend that we pass it as, as is, and I'll come back the second, the next reading and report on whether the changes are made, and we can amend it at that time. She did, you can see her, I think all the councilmembers got a letter. She, the, the references she made to the code sections in there isn't actually right, which, since they wrote the bill, you thought they would actually get them right, but they did not. So, so if you have any questions about that, feel free to drop me an email, but I think all of you have received the letter from AT&amp;T.
It's interesting, those poles, those, those small, those small units, you know, we've always had some coverage problems with that, and it's, it's good to have those. But, you know, when, when you put, put an investment into new light poles and all of these things and then, and their aesthetics, you know, you have to, well, aesthetics and electronics, you know, you can't, you can't go willy-nilly and put these wherever you want to. Maybe we could go back to city attorney deals problem and, you know, go, go into a, you know, he's got the wind ringer on his phones.
Yeah. So unfortunately, the state restricted, so these, these things will have, things attached to the poles and will also have something on the ground, which isn't ideal in a clear zone, so we're going to have to address that. As I said in the memo, we are working, I am working with Verizon right now on a master lease agreement for these type of facilities in the city, and that will be coming back to you at a later date. But I want to get the ordinance passed first so that those regulations were in place.
Roll call.
Gross.
Hi.
Gil.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Resolution passes its first reading, all eyes. Item 15 is property and liability auto insurance renewal, and this is a resolution approving the ICAP, which is Iowa Communities Assurance Pool, as a city's insurance carrier.
Resolution approving the Iowa Communities Assurance Pool, ICAP, as the city's insurance carrier, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Dodd. Discussion?
Roll call. Gil.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Resolution passes all eyes. Item B is a resolution authorizing the, our two representatives on this pool to be Michael Funky and Kelly Hayworth.
Resolution appointing Michael A. Funky and Kelly J. Hayworth as the individuals to represent the city with the Iowa Communities Assurance Pool and personally guarantee the same, oh, that's not in. Is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gil, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Discussion?
Roll call. Dodd.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Gil.
Hi.
Resolution passes all eyes. I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Moved to approve the consent, consent calendar, items A through double I inclusive.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded by, moved by Gil, seconded by Dodd. Any discussion?
I'm, I'm just interested in a little bit of discussion about how the regulation is for the new special-class liquor license for the Corleville Cinema.
What number, what letter is that?
That is E.
It's basically a beer/wine permit for the theater, so we can sort of beer/wine. It'd be just on the theater property. It wouldn't be out in the mall area.
Okay. And I, I just think of the multi-ages in that facility, and I wonder, you know, how is that regulated?
The, the state, the state rates the rule, we don't have much latitude when it comes to liquor licenses, so as long as the state signs off on that, as long as they follow the state's rules, we, for lack of a better term, we don't have, and the applicant here is a qualified applicant, we don't have a lot of leeway to deny their permit at this point. But the state did sign off on, obviously, you can have minors and everything in the theater at the same time, so.
It'll be, of course, subject to the same check, checks that we do with other establishments for selling to minors.
Yes, so when we do, when we do alcohol checks, they will be on the list. Everybody gets checked, too, so. And they'll have, they'll have the same rules that everybody else does, so in theory, depending on times they can serve and everything like that.
Thank you.
Good point. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Gil.
Hi.
Dodd.
Hi.
Consent calendar is approved, all eyes. Item 17 is our, our regular item for a city engineer to give us an update on road construction projects. Dan Holderness.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you might imagine, the rain and snow over the weekend kind of slowed the projects down yesterday, but they're back at construction today. On First Avenue, they are continuing with the work on the east side of the road to add some temporary widening on that east side. And then, once that work is done, they will move traffic to the east side head-to-head, one lane each direction, and then will begin the work of reconstruction of the First Avenue Sixth Street intersection and the west side of First Avenue for the length of the project. Also today, on the First Avenue project... Also today, on the First Avenue project, we put out some signs encouraging citizens to merge as we go northbound on First Avenue, encouraging traffic to utilize both lanes of First Avenue for as long as possible, and then merge where it does merge down into one lane, so we can hopefully convey more traffic through that one-lane situation and in a safer manner. So we encourage people to heed those signs and to, again, utilize both lanes as you go northbound on First Avenue. On the Coral Ridge Avenue project, they're working on temporary traffic signals installation at three different intersections along that project. They're working on the Oakdale and Coral Ridge intersection, the pavement widening on the southeast corner is intended to be paved this week, weather permitting, and then we're kind of the south, getting the southwest corner of that ready to go as well. And also, weather permitting, there'll be some water main installation work that will start at, along Fair Green Road, and also on the west side of Coral Ridge within this week as well. So the project's moving forward. I'd answer any questions you might have if there's anything to be had.
Could you state when the meetings are for each of these two projects?
Yes, we have job meetings every week here in City Hall at the western of the building, at the Building and Engineering Department. At nine o'clock is the Coral Ridge Avenue meeting, and at 10 o'clock is the First Avenue meeting, and so people are welcome to come...
What day of the week?
Thursday mornings, every Thursday. And people are welcome to come. At the beginning of every meeting, we have the contractor there, and they talk about what has happened the last week, what's going to happen the next week, and there's a time for public questions and comments to get things resolved on each project. So we do encourage people to come and attend if they're interested, and we also have multiple ways. We're reaching out through media, online things, people can sign up for updates, and we're trying our best to keep the public informed of what's going on and what's coming up.
What is that website on the, for the updates on First Avenue? We see those daily.
If you go, yeah, if you go onto our city website slash notify me, www.corleville.org/notifyme, then you can sign up for notifications on a weekly basis. Those notifications come out on Thursday afternoons after we have the, both the job meetings on Thursday morning, and then that gives us time to, the citizens, to review that information and to question or comment that information. That gives us time on Friday then to react to that before the weekend comes. So we have information out on our Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor. There are multiple options, and so we would encourage people to sign up wherever they feel comfortable with doing, and again, we're trying to get the word out of what's happening and what you can expect in the upcoming weeks on the construction.
Thanks, Dan. Any other questions for Dan? Thank you, Dan. City administrators' report.
Yes, several items. First of all, just have two people that would like to introduce and recognize that are new to our community. First is David Clark, and David is our new wastewater superintendent for the city of Corleville, and David comes to us from West Liberty, which, where he's been several years, and before that was Macokata and, where else? David Hockton. Yep, and so just welcome him. It's great to have him here, starting before the construction of our new plant and reconstruction there, so just welcome him to Corleville. Also, in the back of the audience is Brian Hicksonbaugh, and Brian is from Spectra, and he is the one that is here assigned to kick off our Iowa arena successfully and make sure that we are prepared for the opening of that facility. And Brian comes to us by the way of the University of Central Florida, and that was where he was most recently, and we're welcoming Brian back to Iowa because he's a native of Iowa and from Knoxville, Iowa, and the only unfortunate thing is Brian has a degree from another university in the state of Iowa. So just like to welcome both of them to Corleville. Also, just point out, next week is an extremely busy week in Corleville, Iowa city area. We have the, next week, we'll be hosting the City of Literature. People from over 20 countries around the world will be coming to Iowa City and Corleville to celebrate their participation in this City of Literature program, and there'll be several ways that Corleville are helping host those guests into our community. And also, something the CVB has worked on for some time, the World Wrestling will be held at Carver Arena next week, and there'll be, hopefully, eight countries participating in that as well. So it's almost 30 different countries will be represented in Iowa City and Corleville next week, so lots of things happening. And then in addition to that, on Saturday, April 7th, we will be having the Fourth Best Basket Auction, which is an annual fundraiser for that group that puts on all of our activities for this summer festival. That starts at 4:30 at Brown Deer Golf Club. Also, just wanted to point out from the work session, since we do have an executive session between now and then, I did want to point out that we are taking off the arena and performance center discussion for tonight, because we decided that after you spent all the time going through the tax increment financing report, that it might be best not to have both on the same evening, so that you could digest all of that material, and then we'll come back and discuss that. So that's all that we have.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly. Well, Mayor's report, you pretty much mentioned everything I was going to. I'll just welcome David and Brian to the area, and look forward to having you both work with us in the city, and you'll be a great addition. City Attorney's report.
Surprisingly, I have nothing to say, Kevin.
Well, I'm looking forward, and I won't be able to attend because my daughter's prom is that weekend, but the World Wrestling Cup. Unfortunately, some of the greatest powers in the world of wrestling countries are also some of the powers that are having political issues with the United States at this time, so hopefully we'll get as many teams here as possible, but that's why, now that they didn't want to come to, it was beyond their control not getting here, I believe, so.
Thank you. Committee and councilmembers' report. Megan?
Well, welcome, David and Brian. Great to have you here in Corleville. I don't have much, I just wanted to say that last week, I visited the Broadband and Telecom Commission meeting. It was, this is an area that is of particular interest to me because of my work in the field of communications, and I just wanted to say thank you to the members of that commission for all of their hard work. I also want to say thank you to all of our staff in the telecom department. You have a really important job, and you provide a great service to the citizens of Corleville, so thank you for that, and I'm really looking forward to hearing Eric's report tonight during the work session. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Mitch?
A couple of things, Mr. Mayor. First, I did want to say, I guess I didn't know when it was appropriate, but I wanted just to comment on Bob real quick, because I'm not sure if we could have, as a city, have had a more dependable statesman representing us, so hats off to Senator Dvorsky. The second thing, from the library perspective, on Sunday, April 8th, will be, I think, the 10th, and I believe, final, library putt-putt fundraiser. So, you know, the library board and the friends and other groups have kind of made the decision this will be the last year for the putt-putt event, so this is, if it's been one of your favorite events in Corleville, for many people it has been, April 8th, from 11 to 4, will be your last chance to play mini golf at the library. Third, I had a constituent reach out, Kelly, maybe you can help me with this, that said they'd been involved, some people from the disability community with discussions with the arena, but hadn't heard back yet. Was there, like, a committee that was put forth with that, or is there...
We had a preliminary discussion, oh, boy.
Year ago?
Almost a year ago, and all of the discussion at that time was taken into account, but we don't have final plans to show how we would implement the things that we discussed, and so it would be the intent that we get back together with them once we have a set of final plans.
Okay, so I can say that at some point, there will be a reconveniary of that group?
You bet.
Perfect. Fourth, I also want to say, yeah, welcome to Dave and Brian, and Brian from Grinnell, so I spent a lot of time in Knoxville, put some interesting battles there. And lastly, just with staff shout-outs, just I want to give a shout-out to road crews and EMS and police and fire this weekend. I hear a lot of sirens going on, and so appreciate everything you do. And I guess one last thing, too, on a really, really positive note. This weekend, I hosted probably about 12 people from all over the country, a lot of them were Princeton graduate students, some students from Wash U Law School, University of North Carolina, and we're all extremely impressed with the IRL. In fact, I'm going to take this as a compliment, people said, gosh, if you would have just dropped me out of a plane to the IRL, I would not have said I was in Iowa. You know, this is a type of place I'd want to live in, just thought the buzz was amazing, the architecture was amazing, the vibe was amazing, and these were people over and over saying this. I mean, a lot, you know, a lot of people are saying, oh, this reminds me of New York City, or this, or that, so I just thought it was a really, you know, really good compliment. Let's all have it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Tom?
I'd just like to thank the developers. Tonight, we built a complete town, or a complete town being built, and we are so blessed to have good staff people and good people working for us and good people putting good projects in. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for all their hard work, and happy Easter.
Megan? Jill?
Welcome to Dave and Brian. I also wanted to say that it's been an honor to work with Senator Dvorsky and to be able to recognize him this evening. The other thing I wanted to do was say a big shout-out to the streets department, because it was really treacherous leaving my driveway on Saturday morning with all of the heavy snow and ice, but those streets were really in great shape. So once I got out of the driveway, I was good to go, so they clearly did their job and then some. The other thing, it's, as a childcare provider, it's really exciting that we're going to have our outdoor warnings for tornadoes coming up on Wednesday, March 28th. We always look forward to those days, so...
You have all the kids out looking for the tornado.
This is exciting, because we all get to crawl under tables, put pillows over our heads, all these exciting things, so it's all fun until it's a real warning and it's not over in 30 seconds. So just so everybody knows, the sirens go off, not only for tornado warning, but for severe thunderstorms with winds 70 miles per hour or more. I know there's been some questions about that, or if there's going to be very large, like golf ball-sized hail. So that'll be Wednesday morning, the 28th. Watch at 10 o'clock on your weather radio, and the warning at 10:15, and the sirens will go off. Please plan your safety plans.
Very good. Good reminder.
Lots of good information here tonight, yeah.
Lori?
The Performing Arts Center has a lot of wonderful activities for the spring, so check that out, and happy Easter, everyone.
Thank you.
Kevin, as we get ready for executive session, we can't talk about what we talk about, right?
Right.
That's kind of the news here lately.
Yeah.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the executive session to discuss strategy with council to discuss the purchase of sale of a particular real estate, only where premature disclosure would be reasonably expected to increase the price the governmental body would have to pay for that property, or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property pursuant to Section 21.5J of the Code of Iowa.
So moved.
Moved by Gill.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.